August nineteenth, twenty twenty four, ten o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, smiling.
Here.
Damon.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Number four, approval of minutes of the last regular meeting, August twelfth, twenty twenty four. Any additions or corrections?
It'll be me, I'll make that motion.
My second.
On favor.
Thank you.
Okay. Then approval of the corrected minutes of the July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. Shelley said she just had two contracts on here, I think with the same number, like a typo, is that right?
Right.
You needed to correct it.
And I marked which one I needed to change. The other one might have been on the week prior, but I didn't, I had.
Yeah, it was two with the same number.
I had two of them with eighteen, and so I changed that one to thirty one, so.
Do you need a motion to correct that?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, number six, approve this approved monthly report for the following sheriff and election board. These are all until getting half approved.
So move.
My second.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, discussion plus reflection regarding Oklahoma Sheriff's Office funding assistant grant program. Okay, David, I think you're up.
Right. I prepared a policy. Going off, sorry, going off, no, going off of what we discussed last week. A lot of these recommendations were handed down from what Sheriff's Association has said, this is what other agencies are looking, which is exactly the direction you guys will put when you're on anyway. So this is somewhat informed to that. This is what other agencies are currently looking at doing. Now, it's strictly just on a longevity basis, therefore, as I laid out in that policy, if you put in a year already, you would be eligible as soon as funds are made available. And again, you could expect another issuance within, I mean, if you complete the next six months, that would be, that would be permanent, of course.
I got a question, but I don't know if I have.
Okay. Just one second.
Have you talked to the two candidates? I, I mean, you're, you're put in there for sheriff right now, but you can think that they would approve this.
That's, yes, I believe, I believe so absolutely. From what I'm talking, obviously, one of them has obviously seen this side of it, but I believe that both would be on board as of right now, I, obviously.
We had discussion of.
See, one of them on regular basis, that's what I see on.
Well, I was just, I wasn't wanting to try to change it or.
And I, I did put in there, that's totally out of discretion, that was merely because I'm not gonna be here for months, so. But, for the most part, you can't just change it, because this is the same thing that's on the application for the AG's office, so you would have to make an amended application through them in order to change how the funds are set up to go now, so.
This is a copy?
This is a copy, yes. I have the original probably right here.
Okay, well, no, I was just, I, we talked about this, as long as you do it in arrears, I'm good with that. And, but the other thing is, that I, unless I'm a resident, which I very well could be, I think there should be a start date.
Well, so, as you, as I put in that, in that letter here, I've got a copy here, I'll leave it. So the start date that we are going with is, as far as beginning to count your time of service, effective July one, twenty twenty four, back a year to July one, twenty twenty three. That's when it's backdated, that's where I've laid it out.
Okay, so when do you start figuring their, their.
They're going back. And, and so, some of the, what the Sheriff's Association has, was telling me last week following our meeting, was, other agencies are, if you have multiple years of service leading up to, they're actually, some agencies are actually going towards paying those people that have stuck it out for as long as they have.
A lot, a lot.
A lot more than what, say, the guy that's only got a year on. We're doing something different, because there's no guarantee that that funding's gonna be there next year anyway, so, or another application, so, we're just keeping it all even, and plus, it's a lot easier on our reporting, just doing it, everybody gets the same. If you complete the, or the year requirement, and then, of course, the next six months, so.
But in other words, the start date's July one, twenty twenty four.
Twenty three. As far as counting your time of service.
Oh, well, I meant for the everybody, they had to be in there a year before July twenty one, I mean, twenty four.
Twenty four, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And currently, I think we've got three, maybe four eligible for it as of right now, if we were to receive money. So, we'll just, you know, see how that plays out. Now, that's not all, not all of it, like I said in there, that's gonna be divided up into two issuances, so, after the next six months, if you're still here, then you would be eligible for that, after your previous year.
Okay, well, so, what, what happens if somebody meets that year, say, November one, of twenty four?
Right.
And that, they went.
That wouldn't, no, 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 uh, well, then I guess at, at that same point, then, then yeah, because after you've been in January.
Well, my question, what my question is about that, is, are you going to just pay them, are they gonna have to go six months, past that date before they get compensated? Or are you gonna give them, like, two months, November, December?
So they've got the full year.
The start date is July one, twenty four of this program, which we are crediting the year prior.
Right.
So, if they came on November one of twenty three.
Yeah.
Um, then they would, at November one, twenty four, they would be eligible, therefore, they would be able to receive that payment.
Would that just be the second half payment?
That would be the first, that would be their first.
You'd give them in December or six months from November?
Uh, well, it would be the first, once you've completed that year of service, so yes, theirs would come out obviously in December, so.
I mean, you give them the whole six month bonus?
Yes, yes, for completion of their long, this is what this is geared for, is longevity. So, we're awarding this to those who are eligible, who have proven that they're, they're here. This isn't a performance base, this is, you're showing up and you're putting in the time they're being awarded.
What I'm getting at of it, they've only got two years, say, November one was their year anniversary.
Right.
Or their anniversary going to work. Then, in December, you're gonna pay them for being there six months, past that?
Well.
You're, you're not another thing.
You're counting that year from November one, twenty three, because it's effective from the year prior.
Well, the way I read this, you have to work a year before you're eligible.
Correct.
So they will just have worked a year in November, and.
Be eligible for the first, for the first stipend.
And you're gonna give them a, at the time they reach one year, you're gonna, you're gonna give them, well, you're treating them different than the other, is what I'm getting at. Somebody's been there three or four years, five years, whatever, come July one to December first, what you're talking about, two payments.
Right.
They're, they're gonna, like, I think it should be done in arrears. They're gonna finish this six months in twenty four, and in December, be eligible for their first stipend.
I see what you're saying.
But then, that person that went to work in November of twenty three, and their anniversary is November twenty four, I don't care if you would give them, for November and December, and pay them the same, but I don't think they ought to get four months in advance.
The reason we wanna do that is we're encouraging, we're encouraging you to stick around, and that's all this is, all that's.
I know, but it doesn't avoid them taking that stipend, and walking.
Absolutely, but even, even me, I, I get that stipend, doesn't stop me from, if I find something that's gonna pay me more, I, it's not gonna stop anybody necessarily.
I know.
It's meant to combat it, but.
But if you paid it in arrears, if they've already did that work, then they're entitled to it if they walk the next step.
I believe that.
Now, I don't think they're entitled to get six months when they've only worked two months past the deal, and they can take that extra.
That's the first payment, now, the next payment comes, you put in another half year, and the next payment will come, so, you're, you're continuing to have to prove this. Now, yes, they are, they are, they're not getting a big lump, like originally I had, I had set out, which I think, based upon your guys' advice and the Sheriff's Association was a correct, correct way to do it, is splitting this up. Now, you, you put in a year here, we wanna tell you that you're eligible for this, because we have a set time.
But you made all these odds, like you, being here a year, and then go six months before you get your stipend, which I think is the proper way to do it. And, and somebody that was hired last November, and waits till November twenty four to get their year in, you're gonna, you're gonna give them that after two months? I understand they gotta, but.
We're just wanting to credit that year of service, because that's, that's just not, it's, it's not an easy thing.
Well, if you're gonna do that right, then you guys, you guys that have been there over a year before, you're entitled to that half.
Well, that's the way we, that's the way we have it set up now.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do it in arrears. I was just trying to get it to where they didn't walk with the money, they earned it before they got it.
Well, we're just looking at it as, currently, we've got, uh, well, there's a few of us that have been there a few years or more, that have put in that time, and we want to be able to give them what's, what's owed if we're able to access this funding. So, as far as the guy that's been here a year, hey, it's, it's just the system we have set up today. Now, that could be modified at a later date, if we needed to. Now, by all accounts, everyone seems to think that there could be the potential of more funding at a later date for this, so, by doing, I mean, not gonna count on that, this is looking at it as a one-time deal, that seems to be fair all across the board, and it's crediting, not to say we're trying to pay someone off and, and tell them, hey, I mean, now you can pack up and leave.
Well, I realize that.
They're leaving behind the additional payment, but that we could, if they did leave, is there to help recruiting, I mean, if they have an idea, and then, and still then, they've gotta put in that full year.
I talked to Brian, and he wasn't in favor of this paying in advance.
Well, I don't feel we are paying in advance whenever we're going back July one, twenty three, to count in that year, and I don't feel we're, we're, yes, we were aware of it, and yes, this application's open today, and, you know, a year ago, we didn't know that, but we're backdating it that year to help us get something today, now, to.
You guys are, you guys, it, it's more of a strike against you guys that's been there, because if you pay somebody six months, for six months, half of this stipend, from November to January one, and they, they gotta make up the four months, that's not how it's happened with you guys.
Well, right, but this didn't exist, you know, when we, when a lot of us.
I know, but, but you got it, that, David, the big problem with this deal is, is you guys have gotten this, your lobbyists got this deal done down there, and the rest of the courthouse is not gonna get it. I don't think it's any more than fair that they fulfill this, this six months before they get paid, the six months.
Well, that's what, I guess, I guess we're talking two different things, or we, no, you guys.
I'm just saying, we're, we're, if your guy has his anniversary November first, six months following that, he gets his first one. He's gotta wait basically a year and a half.
I, I see that.
That what he earned, over that last six months, he earned that.
That puts him in the same category as you guys. You had to have over a, a year come July one, to be able to draw that six months when this becomes available.
I, I get that.
And, and everybody I talked to is good with that in arrears.
Well, I'm just going off of what, following our last meeting, and this is exactly.
Well, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, that, that, that we didn't want, you wanna try to prevent them from taking that check and leaving.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just like us paying for somebody to get a C D L, and then they, they get their C D L, and then the month after they get it, they take a job somewhere else to pay them, and we paid for their C D L.
Well, I think that, like I said, I, I think we wanna stick with the year, and I just, I just, the reason I say that is, this is, I don't feel like we're risking leaving people behind, or, or losing out on, on that, because, yes, I, I understand the extension of the six-month period, but we're trying to award people to have that, that year of service, to get that, because we're not, we're not always, we're having a turnover every now and then with any years period. It's just, it's happening, and the.
We're all having that, and we don't have a grant available.
Right, I understand.
And nine-on-one's a perfect example, and, and it's all due to lobbyists, and, but we have to look at, the, the three commissioners have to deal with the whole courthouse.
I understand.
I'm not opposed to this deal, but I'm opposed to somebody getting money that they haven't earned.
I don't, well, I guess that's where I differ in that, I don't feel like if you put in a year you haven't earned it, because we, we are, we do ask a lot, not saying anybody else doesn't, but we do ask a lot of our people that, not a way to compensate them, but there are a lot of sacrifices that we all make on a daily basis, that this is what we're trying to get set up for, for giving you your credit for the year. I just don't feel like we're, we're getting robbed should they come and leave. We're not gonna expect them to pay that back, by not, there's not a contract setting here, this is, but, by dividing it up like we were, this is a heck of a lot better deal than, like I originally thought we would do with the lump sum, this sets up seed funding for the next guy we can get to fill his shoes.
It, it's good for you, it's good for you and only you down there in that department, it's creating all kinds of chaos in the rest of the courthouse with all the other county employees.
I don't think that by adding additional six months is going to change their attitude why we should have this and then not, I, I'm not saying.
Well, then, there you go.
I'm just saying.
The way to do it, if it doesn't change your attitude.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think we're gonna make anyone happy, because this obviously is exclusive to our office.
Right.
It's not our doings, that's just, it's been available, made available to us, and we have set up parameters where we're not trying to just give.
Well, and I'm not opposed to you getting it, I'm ready to sign this thing, but, I want, I want you to treat those people fairly, and, and when I say that, that's the rest of the people in the courthouse, that, our longevity, you have to work two years to get longevity here, everything is based off of our anniversary dates throughout the whole system here, that one year before your, and, and so, I think this thing should have that one year, just like you're doing it, but those newer employees, when you hired them, this wasn't available.
Right, correct.
And, and so, to be fair to the ones that's been there a while and have to work six months to get that first half, you, you need to make the others work that six months or two months, I don't care in that November situation, if you pay them for the two months they worked, and then they're still entitled to ten months, or, or at six months, you pay them again. I'm, I'm just not a fan of paying them in advance, matter of fact, I, I think it's unconstitutional.
I don't know about the constitutional side of it, all I'm saying is, we're not paying in advance when we've given them that year effective July one, that's what I, how.
Of credit.
Of, of credit towards this, to, to be eligible for it. We're, we're already requiring it, now, whether they already had it before we did this or not, it's worth making them have that year before they're eligible at all. And, so it's, it's not, I, I guess I just don't feel it is in advance when we're already requiring that year, and we've spelled that out, but, to the one that is a November hire, say, come November one, I mean, I would think by our standard, by the standard that I've prepared here, they would be eligible for that.
Because they completed their.
They have completed that year, and it's not, I just don't feel that's an advancement on it, I think that it's just requiring the year, they've completed that year, they should be, by our standards, set, set up to receive that. And I'm not trying to fight you, or, or argue, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
Well, the difference between you and I, and these two guys sitting here, is the other people we have to deal with, and it's.
I understand.
And, and you're entitled to it, because they allowed to have, okay? But, that doesn't mean we have to sign off if, if, well, it goes back to just how we treat people here, yeah.
I understand that, and I'm not trying to create that.
And, and being.
By, by any means. I, as is right now, you know, we're, we're already experiencing, I mean, everybody that we've got right now, outside of a couple, are, are already, they're already going, either going through a hiring process or departing, so, they are obviously at this point not, not necessarily eligible for this, unless they stick around. We're just experiencing something that, that everybody else is, and I'm not saying that this is, we're better off than anybody else, it's just, it's not very often they, they give us a bill like this.
Well, it's the first time in history, yeah.
And I can't explain it.
Out of twenty-some employees, the other seventy, or, or sixty, or, or left out.
And I'm, I'm not trying to say that, that, that's our fault, I'm just, we're just.
You just got.
I know.
Well, I know when you guys first implemented the whole, the longevity deal, you had to be here a year, and we have a couple of employees that fell short by weeks, and they had to hold, they had to wait in a tire another year.
Right.
To get that month.
Yeah. But there's, there's a lot of things that happened here because of anniversary day, and that's the only thing I was hoping that this would do.
Well, and that's what I've tried, that's, I guess that's what I have tried to set up with the, the year anniversary. Now, I don't think it's a problem crediting a year back from July one, twenty twenty four, I don't think that that's unfair, even though this didn't come out till July one of this year, I just don't think that, that that's, that's going against anything, it's just, especially because most of the ones that have that year already have multiple years, they're not just that year.
No, it's, I'm good with all of this, if they had a year come July one, when it came out.
Right.
It, it's, it's the ones that were hired in twenty three, if there is any, I don't even know if there is, but I think they should have to do the same thing as you guys did, all our employees do, work a year before this thing's benefit, and it starts at that year's anniversary.
Correct, and in this particular situation, we don't have, to my knowledge, we don't have any deputy that was hired in twenty three. Everybody that's working currently is either prior to twenty three or this year, is how we're, how we're, so, I, I think Caleb McCollough is the, the only one that was hired, but he was prior to July of last year, or just right at that, that threshold of July. So I do know that by that standard, the rest of our guy, at least almost half of our guys aren't gonna be eligible until even next year anyway, as is, and anybody that leaves, say, between now and then, is, I mean, that's just more of that funding being available for the next people who can try to go after. Whether, I'm not saying we would advance it to them, to hire them, but that's something to give them to look forward to, in a year's time, I can receive compensation, and I just don't feel that that's in the front, I guess. I do feel that that's, that's in the.
But you don't have anybody hired in twenty three or the first of twenty four then?
We have one, not after July one, twenty three, we don't. I believe Caleb McCollough is the only one that's hired in twenty three.
Well, then, this is not an issue for this.
Right, that is my, that is, that is, yes.
Will legal equal and let you go back and count to July of last year, that credit, without even having that grant, I mean, is there anything issued?
I think everybody, I think that's it, it's July one, but I think it's great that they set up the years, what I was talking about is, is somebody hired in the middle, and where everybody else had to do their time, whether it's one year or ten years, that is.
I understand that, but what I'm talking about, will they allow us to go back and count that before we even got the grant?
The way I understand it.
Some kind of circle up their way, you couldn't, you do, you can't start it till you've got the grant, and blah, blah, blah.
I think, I've, I've read over this, I've read over this, this bill, and I've read over the, the parameters, that's not established, and, what my understanding, after my conversation with Sheriff's Association last week, was, other agencies currently, this is how they're looking at doing it, counting those years, and in fact, their only deviation from a way was dividing it up, if you've been here ten years, you should get a hell of a lot more than seventy-five-hundred, say, in this particular deal, than the guy that's been here a year and just got it, you know? But, we're obviously keeping it, trying to keep it within our department, fair across the board, you just put in your year, and that's what we're asking of you right now, but there's more to come if, if you put in some more time, and then, so, so yes, I, the answer, I know nobody was, was hired just last fall, post, post of July one deal, I'm almost certain of that, so it shouldn't affect anything. Now, the other thing with that is, that's why I put in there, at the discretion of the sheriff himself, so, if later changes come, that can be, I mean, it can be done, it's just not, it's just something we would just have to re, turn in a new form to the AG's office, we need to, to figure out something different, but no parameters are set down by the AG's office that, that would deny this, as far as going back maybe in a year. I think most are encouraging that, but.
Yeah, but that's only in the Sheriff's Association.
Well, that's, no, that's.
There isn't any other association got any money.
Well, that's, that may be, but, that's just other agencies that they've been in communication with, because they've really left this broad on what you can put in, what you put, they, they haven't really nailed it down, it's just basically, this is what you're eligible for, so show us some figures, and, so.
It could be debated, though, about if they don't have that year or whatever, yes, stipends or bonuses are, are allowed, but, if they haven't put in enough time prior, like the others did, then that could be an increase in salary, and that's not allowed.
Right, right, which this is, which I've strictly laid out there, this is in no way associated with salary.
But if you follow, that's another thing about what I was talking about.
And we're not, okay, so with that, that definitely wouldn't be used to, to encourage someone, well, this is what we pay you base, but, you could also consider this coming, but, you know, it's not, so we're definitely distancing ourselves from that, but outside of that, you're right, there, there's just, I haven't found, found anything that, that has shown that we're not able to do this.
Right. I mean, I, that, that deal of arrears is just my thought, is after they did their due diligence, because I, my guys, my shed have to do that, too.
Right.
And so, you know, that's.
What, good approval with that?
What good improvement was that clause in there?
Well, I think that he's got it.
He does, he's got the people.
And it's just a one-year deal and you've got to twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir. There's, there is, that, that policy there, there, I mean, there definitely is, is room to improve. That's by no means perfect. I, it's just coming up with something, not necessarily on the fly, but the best that I can do for right now. But that could be changed, that definitely can be changed. And I, and I'm certain it will. But.
For the better.
Yeah.
Well, it can't be changed without meeting our dues. I mean, that's, cause it's all hinges on us signing off.
Correct.
And so the changes will have to come eventually signing off.
Right.
So, is this it? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
On favor. You don't need to stamp that, you reckon or just?
Well, I don't know, since it's a grant that's going in, I kinda hate to do anything different than what they want. I need to sign with that.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I appreciate it. Okay, you want me to?
Thank you.
Want a copy of it for you?
Yes.
Something, I will. Thank you guys. You too, thank you.
All right, number seven. Number eight, discussion possible action regarding the application for the County Community Safety Investment Fund, RFP.
Is that you? No?
I just came in for the, the stuff, the inventory stuff. I don't know if that was.
I didn't know we had a safety investment fund. RFP.
Cause I looked for that and I was like, hey.
Was Ashley over there?
See, cause I thought Ashley had me put something on, but she never sent me.
Well, it's in here, there's something down here.
Well, let's just get that and we'll come back, we'll, or we'll come back to it. We'll, I'll find out whose it is. Cause somebody should have sent me something on that. Maybe sent me an email to put it on there.
I guess she doesn't, there's nothing I can tell that pertains to that. Unless this is it, but.
Is she in here or open here now? Working today or?
I don't want to be lied on her office unless she dispatches. Is she here today?
I don't know. Oh, she's been covering her size a lot.
Okay. Well, I'll just make the motion, we think it'll happen. We'll find out more about it. Favor. All right, number nine, discussion possible action regarding the resolution designating procedures for the Woods County Free Fair Premium and Awards Account. Okay, this is a deal that, that Rachel is handling the, the checks and stuff, the trophies at account, this Elwin Oka. She's, it's last two years, they've written the checks for the, the kids at the fair and the women and all of that. And she just put together a policy of procedures on that. And so.
And that's, that's the handle, so that's.
Yeah.
She did the procedures there.
And so, and, and I think they're fine. At least this way everybody knows, Fair Board knows what the rules are. Oh, it's your extension, you guys wanna read that, look at it.
I have to say that. Either the resolution or motion? Is it, is it ten?
Yeah.
Type two?
Is it?
One and ten?
Yeah, they're kind of together. They're kind of together, yeah.
Cause this is gonna be, yeah, the, this is for another item, but that policy is in there.
Procedure.
For number nine.
Yeah, for number nine, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor. Okay. Number ten, it's discussion possible action regarding requisitioning for the free fair premiums and awards account, purchases over five hundred. Well, that, that's kind of deceiving there because they, the, the Fair Board, that where they went over five hundred, it's on the rewards, it's on the trophy. And they got the kids' ice chests, I guess, this year. And ten or twelve of these ice chests went over five hundred bucks. But we, we have it. In the past, we leave those rewards and, and the stuff to the Fair Board to do.
Do I need another motion on this?
I, I guess, yeah, we'll leave it that way.
Purchases over five hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
On favor. Okay, number eleven, discussion possible action regarding the surplus of a two thousand sixteen Ford pickup for the fire department, ID number RF three five seven zero two two.
That would be Caff and Fire Department's cab brushroom that's gonna go out for sealed bid. Uh, sorry about that.
That's theirs, but what you said about sealed bid?
It's the, it's their rotation truck to go out for sealed bid. That their, their new brushroom is replacing.
Okay. And we got a plant, you got Jennifer on the.
Yeah, she was, she was getting stuff around to do the sealed bid process for her.
Okay. On favor.
Just cabin chassis?
No, it's a full unit. Cabin chassis, bad.
Probably is.
What's that?
Okay, number twelve, discussion possible action regarding the surplus and jump a hail water pump for the fire department, ID number RF four two oh dash oh one three.
That, that is the pump out of Capper's tanker, the one that came from Freedom with the pump failed on it.
Okay.
They had to repower and put a new pump in that truck.
Okay.
So that was two separate items, the pump and the, and the engine on there. We just hadn't got them off inventory before.
So that's, okay, so this, this number on that is just a pickup, but it's got a tank and a pump on the back. Is that got inventory numbers? Does that need surplus to go out?
They didn't have inventory numbers.
It's just all one deal.
That was a, before we got into the whole one unit, it was.
Built up by them.
The county bought the truck, the department did the skid and all that stuff and it's, it's being sold. And the county is one unit, completely built because the county built and replaced that truck with the whole county.
Be good?
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
So we need a motion?
I'll make the motion for the pump.
I'll second.
On the cap.
On favor.
Aye.
Number thirteen, discussion possible action regarding the surplus and jump a Ford engine for the fire department, ID number RF four oh five dash oh oh six.
And that was the engine that powered that pump? That Capper tanker? It was, when it came in, they were.
They're separate units?
Yeah, they were separate units and they were obsolete when it was put in anyway. And it's not really set up to repower it anymore, so.
So is it?
On favor. Number fourteen, discussion possible action regarding the surplus and return to DAC a linear copier for the DA's office, ID number DA two one three dash oh oh. On favor.
Aye.
Number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn and parking lot on December sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-four for the Chamber of Commerce, bring Christmas home for the holidays.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On favor.
Is that just a little unparty thing?
No, I think that's what she kind of asked, talked this about, didn't it?
That would be a pretty big deal, I think, or they plan on it. That's, that's what Megan, I wanna say Perry, Larry came to talk this about, right?
Uh huh, yeah.
Well, that'd be nice, might be a good deal.
Okay, number sixteen, discussion possible action regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Woods County Financial State.
And there's two places she needs to sign.
Okay.
Be in motion?
Yeah, I was just looking to see, I thought maybe I'd find a place where compared this year to last year, but I'm thinking on it.
Hmm, that I don't know.
That was all I was.
Taxes, you mean?
Well, just start finding how much, yes, revenue.
Revenue.
Here's the, the.
She said caller, she needed to answer the questions.
Well, it looks like it's dismembering, but money available and that gets up there pretty high. I guess before it's encumbered or whatever.
Your momma's got, more likely it's got the schools and everything involved.
It's way up there in the menu, so, but I'm sure we can do a good job of spending it, so.
They'll be funny to help us if we can, right?
So many. Say. On favor.
Move that one.
Number seventeen, discussion possible action regarding AirMed Care Network Annual Memberships.
Okay, so this year, when she asked for the individual invoices, they just went ahead and did a, the agreement, the terms and conditions for each one, so.
For each one of them?
Well, for each district and for the courthouse. So like this one here is district one.
So we'll have four of these assigned?
Yep.
Okay.
District three and the new courthouse.
Okay.
It's seventy-five dollars per household, again, like it was last year, so.
For this, what is this, Live Fly or?
No, this is AirMed Care, we still have the, the other one.
This is a new one?
No, this is the one.
This is the old one?
It's the old one, yeah.
Air Evac or Live Fly, whatever they have.
The other one, I think, I think it was closer to January when they did it. I don't know, they should be sending us something real quick.
Right.
I'm sure.
You have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
One page, I teach one.
Yeah.
I talked to Friday or Saturday, he acted like it was good. Is he still?
He's still active now.
And that's because of the infection, is that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, seared.
Oh, yeah.
That stuff's pretty dangerous.
Going quarantined, when they moved him from Mercy to the Pinkfish facility, I guess he had symptoms of a test, maybe they're putting him in quarantine.
My brother-in-law, that was his stuff at the hospital, his fighting cancer that happened from the antibiotics. Antibiotics positive, then you have to use different antibiotics to get rid of it.
Well, that bacteria that he's got, that metal, he's gonna have to antibiotics.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it won't be, right now it's, it's sort of big one, but I mean, eventually once they get it under control, it'll be a negative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, cause that metal in your body causes that stuff and all that. It's from the metal, that's what it's from. All right, number eighteen, new business. Okay, I think we're close. City Council, we've, we've got a contract in hand that looks like it needs a few changes, but just typos. But I will see if they wanna correct it and pass that tonight. We'll pass it next week as far as we could have seen so far. But I will see if they wanna correct it and pass that tonight, we'll pass it next week, as far as we could have seen so far. Yeah. Anything to add there?
I'm gonna meet with, uh, architect and Susan at the nursing center today, they canceled last week, but kinda go through that and find out.
What they're having going on.
Yeah.
And then Christie helped a lot on this, came up with all this stuff there. We've got funds available of twenty-nine thousand and something and it's from, it's called seven eighty-one. And it's from those bills, seven eighty and seven eighty-one is where they, they turn those people loose out of, out of jail, you know? And it's the money they think that, that have saved. And I don't know, maybe I missed where, when it came, do I?
What's the name of that, is that maybe that?
It's, it's seven eighty-one, no, it's, oh, well, it could be community, but I don't know, it's, we don't have, have to vote on anything yet, anyway. I mean, I just, I was gonna.
Thank you.
If we go through there, is that page in there, is Christie with all those amounts, the other counties still, that's got available?
That would be in the email portion.
County Community Safety Investment Fund, yes, it's an application that we put on the agenda. Someone wanted to meet you, the application for this right here on the agenda.
Well.
That's what, that's what that number nine was that you were looking for?
Yeah, it's still, it's still the same deal we went to, we don't know enough to, to make, take any actions. And I don't know when it will.
And it was Christie?
This Christie?
This Christie, yeah, okay, forgot.
She got the email.
Gotcha.
All right, still, there's, there's an email with a whole list of counties and if it tells you anything, all the counties and CDA, all but Woodward.
We can help the sheriff or the jail administrators.
Yeah.
District attorneys.
But we're not here studying what was usually on, implied, we can. Well, it says in there that the ending date, start date and ending date were both in twenty-three, but.
They extended it, though.
Yeah, because look at all these, this is what I was getting at. Alfa County has right at nineteen thousand, Beaver has eighteen thousand, Simeroon has seventy-five hundred. Ellis has thirteen thousand five hundred.
More like twenty-nine.
Yeah.
There's some kind of emails from Chris Rodeau, wasn't there, I was answer about a week ago?
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Harper County, I've been noticed to me how they got, I suppose they got more population than Simeroon County, there's a list.
I've seen that, totally agree.
But Woodward and, and Grant and King Fisher.
I wonder if anybody's taken any of this money, yeah?
Woodward and Grant and King Fisher, if they aren't on this list, they, they take it. And Woodward turned theirs over to Kevin Evans, which I'm not sure what his title is, but he works, I don't know if it's DHS or something, Woodward County.
Right.
Max was going to his DA last Monday to fi, figure out what that could be spent on and how to do it. But reading through this stuff, Christie guys, I don't know how to decipher that about the bids and all that, but I have contacted, we sent Brenda Rose a copy of this, what you all are looking at, for her to look through and she did tell me that she has things going on within Alfa County and Har, and Major County and that that stuff can be combined, I read through some of this, you can partner up, so.
Oh, yeah?
And I talked to Brian, but he hadn't seen this whole thing. But it gets pretty convoluted to me when they're going there talking about the, uh, the proper bid process and all this, I don't know what, what we're supposed to bid out.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
Well, maybe he can give us some.
Just kinda, kinda get it to, where somebody knows something about it, I was thinking Brenda might understand it.
Yeah.
But I actually talked to Travis Star this weekend and he didn't know anything about it. And, uh, but I told him about Brenda having done it for Major County and they might put it together and do something.
Yeah.
But I don't know, but supposedly, the way I understand it is from what the legislature thinks they say by turning those guys loose and not having them incarcerated from those bills, that's seven eighty and seven eighty-one.
They save money and the people lost property. Probably, probably they were out stealing.
Yeah. Yeah, you'd pretty near think that they could have found something different, a program of their own. They're so smart down there as how to rehab those people that they turn loose. If they just opened the doors and turned them loose, then they're probably right back to doing the same thing as doing the way they locked them up.
They don't have a job, that's all they know.
Okay, any other new business? Number nineteen, previous, bring, bring a purchase order.
There's one, I'll make that.
And I'll get that signed while I'm still got arms free.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor. Motion to adjourn, I need it.
I think I got it signed before we even started.
Is it labeled adjourned?
I just had J and then I finished smiley as it.
I got a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.